Please rise and face the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America. Here to the flag, the United States stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Honor the Texas flag.
Flag to the east.
Texas, one state, and God.
Mayor, as an order of housekeeping, could we open the meeting up before we continue with the rest of the meeting?
We need to read the call. Notice of public meeting. Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of Brownsville pursuant to chapter five, five-one, title five of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given with the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, and in accordance with Article Five, Section Twelve of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, February the sixteenth, two thousand and ten, at five forty-five P.M. and six P.M. in the City Commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at ten oh-one East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We have an executive session item first. Discussion pursuant to section five-five-one point zero-seven-two of the Texas Government Code to discuss delinquent tax properties struck off to Cameron County for itself and other entities from a tax resale held on November the third, two thousand and nine.
I would move that before we go into executive-
Before we do that, let's dispense with the prayer and then go on to the next session. Do we have somebody here for the prayers?
You're not following-
If, Mayor, if we could, we have a whole bunch of kids out here and I don't think they want to sit through our executive session, so maybe we can take them up and that way they can get back there.
I was about to give you a motion to continue with invocation.
Can we start the prayer and then have a motion for this?
Sure.
Have the kids, do we have somebody here, the law chief and the per? Now, Commissioner, would you please prepare?
Let us bow our heads, please.
Dear Lord, we give thanks for this wonderful day. We ask for continued blessings for our citizens and for the city, and especially with the gifts that we have before us here with these children. May you always guide them and protect them. May you be with them through their ups and their downs. We thank you for their coaches, for their families, for the sacrifice that they make, and we ask, once again, that you be with us here at this meeting and that your word may prevail. In this we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please be seated and I'll entertain a motion to move up the proclamations.
So moved.
Second.
Then we'll have the executive sessions. It's been a very long day. I appreciate your patience. We have a motion, a second, to move up the proclamations. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Can we do the proclamations, please, to the secretary? And who's the first one?
We have one proclamation for Brownsville Peewee All-Star Football Team.
Okay, can you all come up here with your coaches and everybody involved with the team there and we'll present you the proclamation.
Just the attachment.
She's trying to get a signature from that person. Open up, open up the framework. She's got it over there. Let me make a copy of it. We need to make a copy of it.
It has been a long day. It's always a pleasure to recognize our youth sports and our community. You guys are the heart of this community, and I'm sure we'll have a few future Heisman Trophy winners here and NFL players here. How many of you are looking forward to a future in playing in high school, in college, and pro? No, no, Commissioner Atkinson, I think your time has since passed. Congratulations to all of you. We're all very proud of you, and now I'm going to proceed with reading the proclamation. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas congratulating the Brownsville Peewee All-Star Football Team on its Valley championship performance. Whereas on January seventeenth, two thousand and ten, the Brownsville Peewee All-Star Football Team beat a tough Westlaco Peewee All-Star Team twelve to six in double overtime to claim the Reaplex Youth Football Championship, emerging as champions from a field of ten teams, beating Harlingen twice, Edinburgh, and finally Westlaco en route, and whereas seven and eight-year-old players on the squad represented the four Brownsville teams Cowboys, Cardinals, Chargers, and Dolphins, and played a fifteen-game season beginning in September, two thousand and nine, and whereas players on the championship squad included Brian P. Duran, Isaiah K. Muniz, Isaac Irachetta, Santiago Castillo, Carlos Calindo, Maricio Garabé, Eric Pizarro, Jonathan Huerta, Gilbert N. Salinas, José E. Del Pozo, James Olvera, Miguel Payán, Ley Guevara, Giovanni Grivera, George Solis, Sebastian Sosa, George Mendez, Paul Barrera, Pablo Ponce, Junior, Justin Anaya, Nicholas Patterson, Andrés J. Costilla, and Corbin Garza, and whereas coaches include Gilberto Salinas, Albert Grivera, Peter Grivera, Emilio Sosa, Felipe Garza, and José Luis Garibay, all of whom coached the Cowboys Peewee Squad, and whereas these youthful players have shown their championship medal and along with the coaches who gave of their time and energy are to be recognized and congratulated. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby congratulate the Brownsville Peewee All-Star Football Team on its championship performance on winning the Reaplex Youth Football Championship done on this, the sixteenth day of February, two thousand and ten, signed the Brownsville City Commission and our City Secretary. I'd like to call one of the coaches, Mr. Salinas, for yourself to come up to say a few words.
I'd like to thank the City of Brownsville as a whole, including the commissioners and everybody involved in this commission. I'd like to extend an appreciation to our coaches and not only to the coaches but to the parents, and as we go down, we actually thank all the players, the football players, for their toughness, their durability during an extended season that still has not ended to this day. I'd like to thank also especially the sponsors who actually helped us out, and if I'm permitted, I brought some plaques actually so that we can extend to the, and I'm almost done. It's not a filibuster. First of all, I'd like to thank, we had actually eight sponsors that actually aided us in our championship season, not only as a City of Brownsville but to represent the city in a different place. Some of you don't know, but we had teams all the way from Houston, a team from Irving, a team also from Corpus Christi, and these kids were well in there and they held their own, and of course, that trophy says it all. But I'd like to thank the sponsors, and I'd like to see if they can come on up real quickly, or maybe I'd walk to them? Okay. Okay. Al Wichi Mural? Peter? Gulf Coast Development? Okay, Costilla in Office Law? Costilla in Ortiz Law? And did I say Salinas Construction? Salinas Construction? Also, also a- Also individually, as a sponsor also was Minerva Peña, helped us with Olive Ada Park, and she is not here today. Jaime Barrera, Living Way Christian Church. They played an intricate part in our practices. We actually practiced in their church. Also, George Solis, First Baptist Church, also helped us out when we had any weather problems. Also, we had a- I wanted, I made an extra plaque to present to one of our coaches who was there pretty much all the time, and I'd like to extend a very personal salutation and his personal commitment, and he was going through a situation through his family as well, but we are very appreciative to him, and his name is José Luis Garibay. And two more. This is, without a doubt, we call this an MVP plaque. We'd like to present this plaque to A.J. Costilla. Remember his face. You guys are gonna see him. And also, I'd like to extend a salutation and appreciation to Brownsville Parks and Recreation. Juanita Vera. That's it, sir. That's it. Thank you. All right, just quickly, I'm gonna read something right away. My apologies. All right. Member, Mayor, Mayor and members of the City Commission, I just wanted to give you just a little glimpse as far as what happened, the final moments of this game, and it's a truly historic moment. The game was played on a very cold January afternoon in Almo, Texas, where the ten best Peewee football teams in the Valley competed in the All-Stars. The Brownsville and Westlaco All-Star Teams both came into this game heralded with a reputation for high-octane offenses, both scoring at least thirty points per game during the regular seasons, but this time it was all about defense as the Brownsville team was trailing Westlaco six-zero late in the fourth quarter. With a little more than two minutes to go in the fourth, Westlaco started from their own twenty-five yard line with a plan to burn out the final minutes of the game. They ran a wishbone run to the right when Brownsville All-Star linebacker Hilito Salinas collided with the furious Westlaco running back and with a textbook tackle forces a football to pop up in the air. The ball lands and it's a feeding frenzy. At the bottom of the pile was Brownsville's defensive end Lee Guevara who recovers a fumble, and there's seconds left on the clock here. The momentum has officially changed. Now, the Brownsville team has a first and ten from the fifteen-yard line, and a few plays later, seconds on the clock, quarterback A.J. Costilla punches the ball into the end zone in a quarterback sneak. The game is tied and sent into overtime.
Wow.
Now, I did say it was cold. Very cold. After two grueling quarters and overtime, the Brownsville All-Stars again were being stuffed by the Westlaco defense, but in just a split of a second, running back Isaiah Muniz, our fastest guy on the team, bolts out of the backfield from a triple-option formation, cuts the corner, and scores on a twenty-yard run, bringing the first-ever Reaplex Youth Football Championship to Brownsville. I mentioned the names of four players. Those are the four players that were involved in the final moments, but let's not forget, there's twenty-one football players on this team, six coaches, and one team mom that truly made this dream come true. Thank you.
Gilbert.
Congratulations.
And on behalf of the City, congratulations to everybody, especially the kids who made it possible, and the parents. Thank you very much. Congratulations. City Secretary, Item A.
Item A, Executive Session Item A, Discussion Pursuant to Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two of the Texas Government Code to Discuss Delinquent Tax Properties Struck Off to Cameron County For Itself and Other Entities From a Tax Resale Held on November the third, two thousand and nine.
May I have a motion?
Executive Session, second.
Motion by Commissioner Carmarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Yes, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being patient. We'll move to Item A, Action on Item Discussed in Executive Session. City Secretary?
Item A, Discussion and Action on Resolution Numbers Two Thousand and Ten dash zero-zero-six through Two Thousand and Ten dash zero-sixteen regarding the approval of bids received at a tax resale held on November the third, two thousand and nine, for the following foreclosed properties.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to advise council to proceed with sale.
There are a motion by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkinson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rosa. Mayor's Report. Today, we had the opportunity, Commissioner Samora and I, to welcome Mr. James Olmos, the actor who is here in town promoting the financing of the chess film documentary that was done here in Brownsville in the interest of science and education, and it was a great opportunity to represent the city and welcome him to our city. He will be going to BISD Board Meeting and the university meeting with folks that are involved with chess, and hopefully this will get the message out throughout the state, what Brownsville has done with chess and more so, more particularly, the children, what they've done with chess here in Brownsville and the power that it's, how it's empowered them to succeed. I've had meetings with the Brownsville Housing Authority. We, some of us took part with Scout Day. That was a fun day where the scouts came here and took over city government for the day. Attended ripping cuttings, met with chamber representatives, had meetings and briefings on the multimodal, which is scheduled to be completed, if nothing changes, by the year two thousand and eleven. This is on fast track for the past two years where land was acquired, sometimes using eminent domain. It's a thirty-one million dollar project. It's seventeen lanes for fourteen bus lines, and it's expected to be a regional bus terminal connecting to cities like Port Isabel, San Benito, Harlingen, McAllen, who have partnered up with Brownsville also to build this facility, and also, of course, will connect with the Intercontinental USA. The West Rail Project is on track. It should start about next four months, construction, and it's scheduled to be completed within twenty-four months. We also have the Morrison Road, East Morrison Road Expansion, which will be a project in partnership with property owners in the city. Hopefully, that'll be starting in about six months, and that'll open it up for more development there, increase our tax, property tax revenues. The light at International Boca Chica has been integrated from a TS-one to TS-two. It'll have a new computer system to where they can synchronize them. Also, it'll be more stable to withstand high-power winds where the cables are not flying and being disrupted there and the such. We have the issues with the public comments that I want to address. Last time, you know, I encourage people that come and speak during the public comments to try at first get their issues addressed before it's brought up here, before it makes us look bad unnecessarily sometimes, because usually some of these issues that are addressed here is based on information that they don't have. For instance, the last time, we had an individual come here and really was a little upset about the Dana Road not having a light there on eight oh-two and Dana Road, but truth be known, the city has been working on that for the past eighteen months, and it's not something that is done very easily or quickly because you have to work with TextDOT. That's a state highway. We have done the EPA studies, the survey. The city has done what it needs to do to get that light up there, and hopefully, TextDOT will get it installed within the next two months. So it's a twenty-month process that we're looking at for this light. Had the individual contacted our department director or the city manager, he would have known that instead of coming up here and making it seem like we're not doing nothing. We are trying to address these issues that are brought before, to the commissioners individually or before us, but you know, I encourage people before they come in here and start blasting or criticizing or make it seem like we're not doing anything, to first check with city management or the department heads and get their answers and maybe also provide input. If you have good ideas, we welcome them, but to come out here and just say things that are not true, it makes us all look bad. The same thing with the person that came up here and criticized that we weren't taking into account the stimulus money in the rate study. That's not true. The monies that we got from the stimulus money was taken into account in this rate study. So I mean, you know, whether you agree with it or not, that's besides the point, but when people make statements like that, it creates a perception that's false, and people believe it, and they think we're not doing something or we're doing something wrong, when in truth, it's not. We're trying to do everything we can. On behalf of the commission, myself, and management, it's an everyday challenge. The Haiti relief went off to a good start. The city participated with JK Family Clinic on West, East, West Elton Glor. They raised two thousand dollars and presented that contribution to P U B to kick off the Haiti Relief Fund, and citizens, ratepayers are encouraged to donate five dollars when they go pay their P U B bill, either by mail or at the facility there at P U B, and donate five dollars towards that humanitarian effort, which is sorely needed to help the people of Haiti. Next Saturday, with the help of Commissioner Gowen, we have the Wellness Project, and we'll have at the park, and there will be at the Stillman Dog Park on Farm Road five-eleven. And there will be at the Stillman Dog Park on Farm Road five eleven. It'll be Saturday. What time?
Nine.
Nine o'clock in the morning to start off. We encourage people, as part of a wellness project that Commissioner Gowen has been very involved in implementing here in the city, to participate. Take your pet and go to the dog park and exercise. It starts at nine. We also had a very good meeting yesterday, President's Day, with Rick Bosquet, From the executive director from the Texas Humane Legislative Network. He was here. He flew down to Brownsville. And all the rescue organizations got together, and they're preparing, in conjunction with them, to support or introduce legislation at the next session in the state of Texas to help with some of the issues like overpopulation and the humane treatment of animals and many issues facing our municipalities. With that, we'll go to the next item on the agenda. And it's the commissioner's report. The next one is Commissioner Mr. Atkinson, Charlie Atkinson.
I'm gonna pass today, but I just want to reiterate what the mayor was saying about Dana Road. That's, that street divides Commissioner Samora and I's. And I think she was gonna talk about it too on her report. So I'm gonna refer to Commissioner Samora on the update on Dana Road. So I'll pass.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkinson. Commissioner Gowen?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone, including, especially the Health Department of City of Brownsville and the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the School of Public Health, For a wonderful, wonderful kickoff to an event that's so important for our community. Friday and Saturday, we kicked off the Biggest Loser Challenge, emphasis on challenge, as opposed to contest, which it has a beginning and an end. We didn't quite know what to expect, understanding that obesity has now overtaken smoking as the number one health risk in the United States. And we were overwhelmed. We signed up four hundred and eight people from this community, and we are still receiving phone calls and emails as we speak. I'd like to thank very much the city commissioners who were able to come and join us and support the program, Particularly Commissioner Longoria, who was our official DJ for the event, and Commissioners Amora and Troyani for coming to say some inspiring words to the people that were there. With respect to the park, I don't think that Linear Park has ever been as full as it was on Saturday. Clearly, all the way from the museum to the veterans' amphitheater area was filled with either the farmer's market or the kickoff for the event or gymnastic, girls from gymnastics schools that were performing. It was truly a delightful Saturday morning and a beautiful day at that. I would also like to remind people that for the next three months, every day except for Sunday, there is a free activity somewhere in Brownsville. It may be an aerobics class, a zumba class, a yoga class, a walk in the park, as the mayor has just noted, this Saturday is at the Stillman Dog Park. All free to every single person in Brownsville. You didn't have to register to be able to join us for the activities and really start a new way of life and enjoy the outdoors. Each of the commissioners has been given tonight a copy of the most recent calendar with the events and the locations in English and Spanish. So you're welcome to contact your respective commissioner if you have a question. Or you're also welcome to go to the city webpage, the city wellness page, and, or Channel Twelve, which will continuously get an update from us as we add and delete or add and adjust the calendar in the next three months. We have also gyms that are calling us even today, wanting to open their doors to people from Brownsville. A little bit more statistics, and then I'll let you go. There were four hundred and eight totals, people that registered. A hundred and two of them were men. Three hundred and six were women. There were a hundred and eighteen women that registered as individuals. Forty men who registered as individuals. Fourteen families, thirty-seven small groups, and six large groups. The average age of the registrant was forty-one point six, and the average goal that they wanted to lose was twenty-three point three pounds. I would close by urging everyone to remember that this is not a campaign that would in any way, shape, or form encourage diet pills, fad diets, any kind of gimmicks. This is supposed to be an educational experience and a chance to learn how to lose weight with healthy eating and active living in a responsible way, which is the only way that weight loss has been proven to be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Camarillo?
Yes, Mayor. In today's Green Minute, there's a, on the screen, I wanted to show you all something, An article that came out in the Washington Post. And it talked about paper and plastic. And it gave facts on the use of paper bags and plastic, and what does it actually do and what does it take from the environment and, you know, the resources that it's used to generate the product. And as you can see on the left, and just real quick, like going through what the paper does, and again, it's consumed by more than ten billion paper bags each. Americans consume about ten billion paper bags each year. About fourteen million trees are cut down annually through the paper bag production. When you look at the process to break down a piece of timber, wood, to actually could use the paper, to construct a paper bag, there's quite a bit that goes into it. For example, the labor, the process, it's a very, it's a very energy-intensive work and type of resource that really goes into this. It's very energy-intensive. If you look at plastic, it's estimated that there's about four billion plastic bags end up as litter each year. Very, very significant. You tie each one from end to end, and you could circle the earth sixty-three times. That's pretty huge. You look at what it uses in terms of oil, again, twelve million barrels of oil produced each year, for again, to produce a hundred billion plastic bags. That's, that's pretty bad. It takes much more than four times as much energy to manufacture a paper bag than it does to make a plastic bag. You look at the energy, again, pretty high. Ultimately, I think what this really tells us, and scrolling down of the article, it gives more information about the pollution on both sides, the paper and the plastic, and which is greater. Obviously, paper does produce quite a bit more pollutants than the plastic. When you look at recycling, you know, the percentage of plastic that's recycled versus paper, obviously, paper, there is a slight edge over plastic. Ultimately, the goal, I think, of what our ordinance is trying to do, and as we, you know, as we start moving forward with the committee's work and the meetings and things that are taking place, I think the article goes on to just basically say it's very important and there's ways to get around from using the plastic bag and the paper bag. And that's basically using a reusable bag. And so, or not using the bag at all. So I encourage the commission, as I am trying to personally and through my family and household, to use reusable bags each time we go to the store. And if I forget it, I'll walk out with it in my hand regardless. But that we make that transition to getting other people to do the same thing and not have to rely on, oh, just put it in the bag when we really don't necessarily need it. So I just wanted to share that information with you all this evening. And I'll email you the, I'll email you the articles. You all can have that. Last night, I had a District Four meeting. It was very insightful. We had Mr. Arno Cortez from TechDOT at our meeting. I want to appreciate him coming out on his day off to talk to the residents about some of the projects that TechDOT is undertaking around Brownsville, most importantly, in the district. Some significant works taking place. And there was a lot of information that was disseminated to the residents that was very important. I learned a lot. I think they did too. And so that was, I thought, very, very, went very, very well. We also talked about different issues. We talked about crime and people driving around with loud music in the neighborhood, drainage issues, and some of the things that hopefully will get worked on on the city's part, but also through TechDOT and some of the future plans they have for drainage in District Four. Most importantly, we talked about lighting issues along Alton Glor, and that there is a way that the city can help to address street lights in that area and make it more of a lit, a lit place. And so we'll be working on some of those issues. But I do want to thank all the residents that came and that attended. They were also invited to come to this meeting too, if they wanted to voice their concern publicly at our meeting. I think that's always important. And so we'll look forward to our next meeting date. And I'll let you all know about that down the road. Brownsville Against Graffiti, you know, we talk about graffiti. We see graffiti quite a bit around town, and we are doing a number of things to kind of combat that. We're joining an initiative with the Brownsville Police Department. We're working with Lieutenant Etheridge and Officer Castillo and Cummings Middle School. What we're gonna do is we're gonna create a mural contest, keep Brownsville beautiful. And the Brownsville Against Graffiti is gonna join efforts with them to create a mural contest in which we're gonna involve the kids in Cummings. And we're going to give them, the contest will be for them to create a mural. And the winner, we have three cash prizes of three hundred dollars, first place, two hundred second, and a hundred dollars for third place. And the winner of the mural will have a drawing painted on an actual business. And the business located on Jefferson Street, East Jefferson Street. And the business owner is very kind enough to work with Brownsville PD and say, why don't we try this project and see how it works? And then maybe we'll go out to the other districts that are being affected by this and try to create this mural project. So this will be the first time that we actually do this. We have a lot of people involved, good people that understand this type of work. So I thought I'd let you all know about that. We're working on it. We'll give you guys more details to come participate and help with the process later on. Last week, we submitted, Dr. Delina Barera and 4B helped the Brownsville Beautification and Keep Brownsville Beautiful submit a grant to keep Texas beautiful. As you know, Brownsville's an affiliate of this state organization. And TechDOT each year applies a million dollars to fund different entities' beautification projects. And so Brownsville's in a category nine, which is comprised of about a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand population. This year, TechDOT has been gracious enough to donate two million dollars to the project. And so this year, we were eligible in our category to win up to two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for beautification projects in this committee. I want to thank Dr. Delina Barera, her 4B staff, Adrian, and, I'm forgetting her name, I believe Gabby, for the hard work that they did, because they not, I mean, they really didn't have to do, they really didn't have to do anything. But I knew if we were gonna do this grant right, it had to go through their office. And she's very good, and they did a heck of a job. And I want to thank, I want to thank them for their hard work and their late nights, because it's very, very difficult to put together a grant in a short period of amount of time. But I believe that with every entity in Brownsville, healthy communities, environmental trend benders, K V B, B B C, and the university and B I S D and all the different entities that did things, that made efforts to keep Brownsville beautiful, I believe we have a real solid chance of winning that, winning that, winning that award. We won't know until March, but I do want to thank her personally and professionally for the hard work and her efforts, because again, it was quite a bit of work that she had to do. And so I really appreciate her, Eli, and for Public Works and Santana for letting his people to also participate. And Pete, I thank you for letting Delina work on this, because I know she has other things to do. But this is gonna, I think, down the road, this is gonna prove really, really huge for this community. So we hope, I'm hopeful that things will work out. And I want to appreciate everyone's efforts and all the volunteers that give up their time and their sweat over the past year to clean up this community. I really want to thank them for their efforts. And last, Mayor, I know I don't have, I don't have this on my report, but I do want to invite you all to the One Brownsville Press Conference this Saturday. I know you have your event at nine. The press conference will be at eleven thirty here in committee chambers. And so we have brought down Mr. Roscoe Mapps, who is a One representative from Washington, DC. He's gonna talk to the community about what One Brownsville is and what we're able to do from this community, but in the state of Texas, be one of, I think, three One campaigns. And so I want to invite everybody to come out. And last, I want to, I want to really thank and congratulate Dr. Gowen. I really do apologize for not being, not being able to attend Saturday. I was out of town. But, you know, you can count me in to help out as much as I can. I want to tell you that this is a huge, huge project that you're undertaking that's really gonna help and affect every child in this community and adult. And so personally, I want to tell you thank you, and I really appreciate everything you're doing, because it is a lot of work. That concludes my report.
Okay, Commissioner Samora?
Yes, I'll make this brief. I just wanted to thank the city manager for allowing me to participate in the city manager's softball tournament a couple of weekends ago. I had an opportunity to meet several of the city staff, because it was a city staff-only tournament. And I'd also like to thank Parks and Rec for getting the fields ready. And on that same token, I don't know if many in the community know this, but the individual who lost his life recently was one of the staff members who got the fields ready to make it enjoyable for all of us. So I'd like to extend my condolences to the family of Mr. George Ortado. Is that correct?
Daniel.
Daniel, George, Jorge, Daniel Ortado. So thank you so much, again, Mr. City Manager, for allowing me to participate. I'd also like to congratulate the C V B and Parks and Rec for landing the state kickball tournament that will be coming in July. Is that correct, Bean? Congratulations on that. Sometimes we need to let the community know that we are bringing groups here, and this is one tournament that is really going to showcase Brownsville. Along with that, we have Sueños y Talentos Soccer Tournament that will be here as well. And that is a joint effort with Laredo, Macallan, and Brownsville. And when will they be here?
July.
July as well. So congratulations to the C V B for bringing them down and allowing us to showcase our community. And Tuffy, and Chris Patterson, and the rest of the Parks and Rec gang. Great, congratulations. And Dana Road, Mr. Mayor has already presented on that. Like Commissioner Atkinson said, we both share that road. And I'd like to congratulate the city staff for their diligence and persistence for finally bringing those lights, which are expected to be erected in April. So thank you very much for that. I know sometimes we do get a little frustrated with our public speakers who come up and show their concern, and they have every right to. But on that same token, I think that we need to take responsibility for doing a better job of telling our story. Thank you.
And I encourage those to work with management and directors when they have a concern. They're there to serve you, and they're more and eager to hear from you. Thank you. Consent, agenda items?
Would approve?
Second.
There are a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion?
I believe there's a presentation from Duramed Futures Tour.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is anyone present?
Yes. Okay.
I'll defer to Beina Yala.
Let's go to back to number four then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Mariano Beina Yala, your Convention Visitors Bureau President and CEO. Thank you, Mr. Charlie Kabler, for giving us this opportunity. I'd like to present Mr. Chris Oshie with the Duramed Futures Tour.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate you putting me on the agenda this evening. It's an honor to be here, and I hope to just spend a few minutes discussing with all of you the historic Brownsville Open, what we, from the L P G A and the Duramed Futures Tour, believe it has done for this city and this community, and what we believe it will continue to be able to do over the next couple of years. The, this, the past four months have been showing tremendous growth for the L P G A. We have added two tournaments that were not previously on the schedule. The Duramed Futures Tour has expanded to Mexico, leaving the United States for the first time in its history. And we're also about to launch a long-term partnership with the Golf Channel, which will finally give the L P G A a consistent television broadcast platform. Two years ago, we were in Macallan. At that time, the city of Macallan had committed to subsidizing that tournament in its early years in order to be able to provide some financial stability as it grew. Attendance and fan interest were strong. Media coverage was substantial, but everything was not perfect. At that time, we had concerns about the tournament owner's long-term ability to grow the event. They had used up most of their resources, pushed the limits of what their staff could handle, and were hinting that they would not renew the tournament contract. When we were approached in April two thousand and eight by, you know, the president and CEO of the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, we thought it was wise to consider his offer to move the tournament down to Brownsville. This good timing by Beina Yala, combined with the indecision from the previous owners, led the tour to move the tournament here to Brownsville and to Rancho Viejo Country Club. Now, less than two years later, we feel that we may have to start looking at other options, something that we are not inclined to do and have no desire to do. We have these concerns because we have not yet seen a sense of collaboration amongst the key players here in the community. We hope this new year brings with it a new spirit of cooperation and a new outlook. In communities of similar sizes, places like Decatur, Illinois, Concord, New Hampshire, and Daytona Beach, Florida, we have seen tremendous examples of collaboration between public and private entities who share the common goal of building an event that their citizens will be proud of. will be proud of. Across the country, we have seen tournaments shine a light on host communities, providing an opportunity to stand apart from neighboring cities and towns. We have not seen that type of collaboration here in Brownsville. I'm here to strongly encourage all of you, as individuals and as a group, to take an active role in the growth of the only professional golf tournament south of San Antonio. The Convention and Visitors Bureau brought the Duramed Futures Tour to Brownsville with the goal of bringing international recognition to this community. In that respect, Bean and his team have succeeded. During a seven-day span last April, more than 126,000 people from 40 countries around the world viewed information on duramedfuturestour.com and lpga.com that specifically related to Brownsville and to the Historic Brownsville Open. Media outlets in Miami and Seattle, as well as Canada, Britain, and the Netherlands, all carried stories on the tournament or mentioned Brownsville as part of stories pertaining to some of our players specifically. An economic impact, you know, conservatively estimated at $361,000 was felt by the community during our visit. So therefore, as a primary driver of tourism here in Brownsville, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, in our opinion, has succeeded in its goal of capturing national, international recognition for this city and driving tourism to the community. The goal has never been for this event to be a fundraiser for the CBB or for the charities here in the community. Any support that can be provided to these charities is purely a bonus. The tour has disagreed with the continued calls from some members of the community that the city fund most, if not all, of the tournament budget. We don't feel this is necessarily reasonable nor appropriate. However, you know, that does not necessarily mean that we are satisfied with the support that the city has offered to the tournament. I'm challenging all of you to work together with the CBB and its board to identify opportunities for the city to positively impact the tournament, be they large or small. The city has a responsibility to be a partner in these efforts, hold the CBB accountable for its results, and share in the success that the tournament brings to the community. The tour is encouraged by the new perspective that has been brought forward by Gwen Benton, the new board chair for the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau. I had the pleasure of meeting Gwen this morning, along with several of the board members, and came away impressed with their shared belief that this event can make Brownsville a better place. Gwen Bean and I all share the opinion that success for this tournament, thus success for Brownsville, will not become because of one person or one group carrying the burden alone. Success will be achieved by many parties, each contributing to the effort. The Duramed Futures Tour sees potential in South Texas. I can envision a time when this event is more than just a golf tournament, but an event which reaches across the border to bring the golf fans in Mexico to Brownsville, filling your hotel rooms and restaurants. I see a time when this event attracts attention from as far away as Morelia, Guadalajara, and Puerto Vallarta through the LPGA tournaments held in these cities. I see an opportunity to use this tournament as a platform to communicate to the community the importance of health and wellness initiatives, characteristics that are personified by the players on tour. But these goals will not help in overnight and they will not happen through the efforts of the CBB alone. It must be a community effort. The Historic Brownsville Open has already made an impression on thousands of members of your community. Thanks to the support of the Public Utilities Board, the tournament hosted a junior golf clinic attended by more than 100 children who learned the game of golf at the hands of our players. Close to 300 volunteers, under the leadership and guidance of Mary Helen Garza, Executive Director of the First He of Brownsville, donated their time, energy, and passion to make this event run smoothly. Dozens of families opened up their homes to see the professional, homes to the professionals, extending the warmth and hospitality of this community to these visitors from around the world. More than 30 countries were represented here last night, last year, including players from Sweden, Australia, South Korea, Germany, and France. In closing, the Duramed Futures Tour believes that there is a future for this Historic Brownsville Open here in Brownsville. But that future is not possible without the hard work that accompanies it. The Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau has taken the lead in bringing an event to this community that positively impacts everyone. We hope that the community and the city understands that Brownsville is just one of 16 tournaments in this country that has the opportunity to host this event and only one of 33 communities around the country that hosts either an LPGA or Duramed Futures Tour event. Brownsville is part of an exclusive club and we hope that the community does its part to remain a member. Thank you very much, all of you, for your time. Appreciate you having me.
Thank you. Item five, seats to three.
Consent agenda items?
A through E.
Would approve.
Motion to approve, but Commissioner Camarillo, can I have a second? Commissioner Samora, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six.
Item six, consideration and action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Animal Regulation and Care Advisory Committee.
The person that would be nominated would be to replace Mary D. Sanchez, who has resigned locally. And at this point in time, Commissioners and Motors' appointment would be Marcela Napp, who has, I've talked to her and she has indicated she's interested in serving as a board member of this board, advisory board.
I make a motion to appoint Ms. Napp to the Animal Shelter, Animal Regulation Care Advisory Committee.
Marcela?
Yes.
Marcela, Napp.
Very good choice.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, but Commissioner Longoria, any discussion?
Camarillo.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Camarillo, Commissioner Camarillo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Excellent choice. Next item?
Item seven, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint one member to the Parks Advisory Board Committee.
Commissioner Camarillo?
May I?
That's not...
That's not what we have in our, number seven?
It's number seven, Estella?
I'm sorry. Number seven is consideration and action to increase the membership of the Environmental Advisory Committee by four additional members.
Mayor, the committee is asking if we could allow four additional members to serve on the advisory committee. We feel there's some individuals that aren't represented that should be as we undertake this major endeavor with the plastic bag ordinance. So we kind of want to make sure we cover all our bases and include the folks that we feel are very much needed to be a part of the group. So I'd make a motion to allow the increase.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Camarillo, second, but Commissioner Samora, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item eight, announcement of two mayoral appointments to the Brownsville Housing Authority.
I'll appoint Beatriz Lopez and Ruben Herrera.
Mayor, and these are to replace?
Mr. Galanski and Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number nine, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2010-0601-CU, an ordinance to allow a conditional use permit to sell on-premise alcohol at lots 17, 18, and 19 of block two of Summit Place Edition, located at 2809 East 14th Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, tonight, this specific use, I'm sorry, this conditional use permit is to allow a restaurant to sell alcohol, and they're located in the area shaded in red, on 14th Street. The Plans Zoning Commission will unanimously to approve this conditional use permit and recommend it for your approval.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Nobody for or against? Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Who to close?
A motion to close, but Commissioner Longoria, second, but Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is an action item. Can I have a motion to approve or disapprove?
To approve.
To approve, but Commissioner Atkinson. Can I have a second? But Commissioner Longoria, any discussion?
May I have one quick question? Ben, currently at this location, are they doing anything?
Oh, they what?
Currently at this location, it's a restaurant?
No, it used to be a body shop, then they had a party place. Now it's a restaurant.
Now it's a restaurant?
Yes.
With a barn?
Yes. The seafood restaurant.
We have a motion to approve, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 10?
Item 10, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2010-1518, an ordinance of the city of Brownsville amending Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances by amending Article 11 Energy Conservation Code by adding Division 1 Wind Energy Systems, Section 18750 through Section 18-758, and dealing with related matters.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is a new item that's an interest in Brownsville. It's windmills for residential use. The ordinance is absent of any type of regulation for windmills in residential property. Mr. Ramiro Gonzalez, our conference planner, will explain the proposed ordinance. It's been recommended by the Plans Zoning Commission and was published in the newspaper.
Good evening, Commissioners. We've presented this before about a month ago. Well, it's starting to regulate wind energy systems. We're not trying to regulate the utility scale, windmills, but we're trying to regulate the residential scale. The ordinance proposes a 70-foot height limit in residential zoning with 20-foot setbacks on each side, and the minimum lot size is half an acre. In commercial zoning, we propose 120-foot max height limit and it's allowed by right. There's no zoning needed. This is, you know, promoting the green perspective of Brownsville. I've already gotten a call from Laguna Vista. They want to follow our lead. So we're definitely out in front of this issue.
Let me ask you this, and I think that's great. Are we talking about allowing an existing homeowner, if they wish to purchase this windmill to put it on their property, or is this for new development, new subdivisions that might go up and developers may wanting to add these windmills to support that subdivision? What exactly?
This is individual homeowners, existing and future.
Existing and future. So this would allow the homeowner to purchase this, correct?
Yes, yes.
And how does this tie in with PUB in terms of allowing them to generate?
I believe that they have started a net metering program. It's required by the state. And as of yet, there is no windmill. Obviously, this is, we're creating this ordinance to promote it.
In advance?
There is interest from the industry. I've talked to industry representatives and they have a couple of clients, so they're just waiting for this ordinance to pass. And they've talked to PUB and they have, you know, everything ironed out with the net metering. So it's, you know, it's pretty much...
So PUB is ready then? If someone was to go out in a month or two months, six months from now and say, I'm going to purchase my windmill for my property, PUB then would be able to do its configurations to kind of?
From what I have understood, they are.
That power, really?
Yes, from what I have understood.
You know, I hope PUB would come before the commission and talk about their, talk about this process because, for example, City of San Antonio, they have what they call the STEP process, which is the environmental side, which is the solar and the wind portion of their utility company, and which talks about, this is what they do with the windmills that they're purchasing power from and the solar panels in which they already have developed, and they're generating that energy. But there's a plan, there's a process. And so I'd like PUB, Ben, at some point to come here and tell us, this is what we are doing for the city, this is our plan for energy efficiency, because we need to know.
I think it's, you know, this is on the residential scale.
Right.
On the utility scale, there's plenty of bigger cities, Austin, San Antonio, Houston, that are purchasing green energy.
Correct.
I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, we have the King Ranch, then you have, again, different parts of the state, West Texas, East Texas.
I know that there's a project offshore on the island that they're trying to promote as well.
Yeah, you know, I think that's great. My whole thing is that I want to see that PUB as our own utility provider to come up, develop its plan, whatever it is, to ensure that we do have a efficiency, energy efficiency program in place so that we can kind of stuff, you know, feed off of the generators and the gas and all this other stuff so that we can kind of see this model being pushed forward a little bit more.
Okay.
But I appreciate the work you all are doing.
If I may? And just to kind of clarify, I know that through the use of residential wind turbines, I think there was a gentleman up the valley who was actually getting checks back from his utility provider. And as such, you know, a lot of people would like to see if it's cost-effective, if it's something they could do, because, you know, it's a rare event to get a check from your local utility provider. And I think that what Commissioner Camarillo is trying to say is that if those opportunities are available, PUB needs to come here. We need to be able to educate the people, you know, the citizens, about what is available to them. You know, yes, we can put these up, but what is the process in which they're going to get credited for their own production and at what rate are they going to get reimbursed?
Exactly. No, I completely agree. I put up on the screen, there's some incentives, obviously a 30% federal tax incentive. The state of Texas doesn't really have much incentives, but I believe they are working on it as well. And, you know, and as far as, we don't have any incentives yet, so, but I do know from...
I think Ben wants to say something. You want to say something, Ben?
Well, we just, we need to go to the, who can have one of these windmills? Because we're trying to tie it into the size of the property. So, because, you know, there's fall zones and there's certain zoning requirements, so we can get into that.
I agree, Ben, and, you know, but again, we do need to work hand-in-hand with PUB to say, well, the city wants, this is what the city will allow. What does that really do to the consumer? And, you know, and again, leaving off of what Commissioner Yani just mentioned, it's true, if they're able to get, you know, get a refund for what they're producing because basically they're generating now their own power and that's helping them and obviously PUB, we need to know what, you know, what can be done for them. And again, but what's that process? What's that plan in place? Because, again, I think it's pretty, I mean, it's a pretty great deal and we need to, obviously, this is where we should be leaning towards.
And then one of the other things that I was concerned about is on your packet, you highlight or you identify some of the concerns we had before. And as far as any kind of inspection on an annual basis, I think that you've indicated that, you know, the city doesn't have the capacity to follow up on that or to keep track of those types of issues and that simply having the engineering seal would be sufficient. You know, I think that's a minimum standards test and at a certain point, we don't want to have a bunch of rusty, you know, windmills that are out there, or wind turbines, I should say, that's the more appropriate word, and be in a situation where their eyes are, because these things are very tall, they're up to seven feet according to the information that you provided here, as far as the diameter of the turbine itself. And these things can be, you know, several, you know, 20 feet high, et cetera. And so when you talk about the offsets, what are you providing as far, I mean, I'm surprised the Beautification Committee is not here to talk about that, because once you start seeing these things pop up, if they're not maintained, it's not going to be pretty.
Yeah, I mean, there is a provision in the ordinance that says if the owner's not going to use it anymore or they're going to abandon it, they have to bring it down. So now the enforcement mechanism, you know...
It's a fine line with abandonment, especially if it's still producing, it's still, it's still turned.
Right.
And if you're not going to have any inspection, how do you get there?
If I may, Mr. Gonzalez, if I may interject here. I would recommend that you go back with Ben to PUB and work it out, make sure they look over the ordinance and they feel comfortable with it. And I know it's state law to where if there is excess, they have to give you credit. I know that. But, I mean, work out the details and then bring it back. That would be my recommendation to the commission, just to ensure that we're working with the utility, local utility company here to make sure that everybody gets it done in the proper way to where it's not going to come back and haunt us later on.
Yeah, it's streamlined the process.
And I think this can be done very easily. We're sitting down with the engineer, either James or Fernando Sines, and next meeting, bring it back, if that's okay with you, Ben?
No, it's fine.
That work okay?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a motion to table this?
Well, I'd like to say something for us real quick. Let me ask you something. You're going to go talk to PUB. PUB's run off a coal plant, so you might not get the help you want at PUB to do this stuff because that's how PUB, you know, we're walking a thin line right now on pushing PUB's hand to make them go green. I think this is a great step you're doing right now. I have another question. Does this ordinance prohibit certain homes from other homes having, or are we going to allow anybody who wants to put a windmill up? Because at the end of the day, if somebody's going to save $60 on their utilities, then, you know, then we're going to be helping, the city's going to be helping these people then, you know, then we're going to be helped, the city's going to be helping these people big time. And I don't think you're going to get the answers that you want at P U B. I'm sure they, there's a concept of wanting to go green at P U B, but bottom line, we invested in a coal plant. So I don't know if you're going to, what I don't want is for it to be prolonged to where it goes away. I'd like to vote on it tonight if we can.
Well, Commissioner, you know, I agree with what you're saying. I think it's important to go back to P U B to talk about this and to ensure that, you know, hey, this is where the city's headed, and this is what we want to do, and are you ready for it? Because I think, again, I don't see how we could go do something and P U B really not know what's going on. The other thing I pointed out...
Commissioner Camarillo, let me interject. There is a plan to accommodate Mr. Gonzalez already. No, at P U B, in P U B there is. That's what I'm saying.
Right, and that's why...
Y'all need to bring it back over here.
I agree.
I mean, this is the first one that I know of, but we do have a plan in place that will, because we already looked at this to accommodate this kind of ventures. There is a plan. We just want to make sure that it doesn't conflict with the plan. That's all. So I think it can be easily done by next meeting. You'll find they're going to cooperate with you. In fact, part of our master plan or strategic plan in energy for P U B is to do a wind farm in the future. Buy into it or build one here at the, so you'll find that they'll be very receptive. And there already is a plan to work with people like you.
Just to answer your question, Commissioner Atkinson, the minimum lot size is half an acre. So you need to have half an acre in order to have one of these towers.
Yeah, and that's based on what, state law or what?
No, 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 that's just, you know, our recommendation and research from the American Wind Energy Association.
Well, somebody in my neighborhood who has a hundred by one fifty, they're not going to be able, they're not going to be able, they're not going to be able to get a wind...
According to this ordinance, I mean, we can go back and change it, you know, it's a half an acre minimum.
But work it out with P U B and then bring it back.
Yeah.
They're the experts. We're not.
Man, I just want to make one more last comment, and I hope we can do it real soon. Because, you know, as we all know, P U B is looking at it as a rate increase on utilities. And, well, how perfect would this be to offset that issue? Because I think that's very important, that if people that are capable and able to say, "Hey, I now want to purchase my wind turbine, and I don't want to be paying this fee increase, and now I can offset..." If the plan is for the city as a whole, then I don't think we'll be seeing these rate increases. I could be wrong. But that's why I think this is also important, just because of that reason alone.
Yeah, we'll go back and we'll bring it on two weeks from now.
The way it works, you generate the electricity you need for your subject, for your house. If you have any excess, you will get credit by P U B. And over the year, it usually balances out, or you get a dip in it.
Well, as you can see on the screen, you know, this is the cost that we're looking at. You know, tend to, depends on the size of the windmill, and also the payback period. We're in a windy, we're in a windy area, so the payback period might be less.
Well, this is the future, so I don't think you're going to find any opposition, not here, not at P U B. But go back, Ben, and just make sure that we're not in conflict with anyone, okay? Thank you. Can I have a motion table? Can I have a motion table?
Motion to table.
Motion table, Commissioner Gall, can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Samora? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were... Commissioner Camarillo, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries to table. Okay, next item.
Item eleven, public hearing in action on the relocation of Central Avenue Park to a park in the immediate vicinity.
Officer Veronese, Commissioners, we've been discussing this with you for the last couple of months. Basically, Central Avenue Park, right in the corner of Boca Chica and Central Avenue, two major arterios. Basically, this park, I guess, has lived its life. It's based on, well, it's located on two heavily traveled arterios. Let me give a little history. This park was, with the assistance of the US Department of Interior and the Texas Parks and Wildlife, in nineteen seventy-four helped put up play apparatus, not that one. That one is already gone. It was replaced with this one, and some basketball courts. The property, as records that we have, was already owned by the city of Brownsville. But the Parks and Wildlife and the Department of Interior provided money to this park, as well as other parks in the community, to put those apparatuses there. This park has no parking, has no sidewalks to the park. And basically, it does not serve an immediate neighborhood.
But the intent... Ben, I lived in that neighborhood. I used to use it all the time. And I mean, but I walked to it. It was a neighborhood park where you would walk to it.
Exactly, but the area has developed more commercialized, Mayor. There are no sidewalks leading to this park from anywhere. There's no parking. So we, working with the Parks Department, feel that this park can be relocated to Cabler Park.
And where's that?
Cabler Park on the corner, on Bowie and Central Avenue. Less than half a mile up the road, is, has six acres that's still undeveloped. This is a seventeen-acre park, of which six acres is still undeveloped.
And we're going to sell this?
Well, let me get to my end of the presentation here and things that we want to do. What we want to do is move the, immediately move the play apparatus and the basketball courts to the, and develop the remaining six acres. This is a two-acre park.
What's the cost of that, Ben? To move the playground apparatus and to...
And the basketball courts.
Public Works will do it.
What, no, no, I know. Well, I'm just asking, what's that estimated cost to us?
Actually, they're not going to, I know it sounds different, but we're not moving the basketball courts. We're just going to create basketball courts at the other ones. My staff asked me that question too. Basically, with Public Works help, I would guess to say that it'd be a couple thousand with materials just to lay down for the courts. That'd be done right. But there's also irrigation questions. I can let Ben finish the presentation part. Playground structures, I don't want our personnel doing that because of warranty issues. There's companies that are authorized to take down and put back together this equipment. I believe it's through Game Time that's the company. That's usually about eighteen hundred dollars, anywhere from twelve, eighteen hundred dollars to be done right. That way, it's reassembled. It's just like it was before. They usually give us some little extended work.
You passed the, I hate to take a neighborhood park and make it a half a mile up.
That's true, Mayor, but we want to enhance this park by developing a five-acre park.
Yeah, but can we do both? And keep this one there and develop, if you plan to develop the other one, why displace people that use this park? I mean, this isn't, there are a bunch of residents nearby. And there is, if you go there on the weekends, you'll see a lot of people using it. I know, I know, because I see it.
That's true, Mayor, and that's the whole purpose of the public thing, is to solicit an improvement like this. But basically, we want to provide something better and a safer area. We will work closely with the Department of Interior and with the Parks and Wildlife to make sure that the grant requirements are met, that down the future, we are not hampered by them not funding the city. Because we will...
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, these people walk to this park. How are they going to walk half a mile away?
Mayor, the Cabler Park that was open, it's not too far down the road. I don't have the exact mileage, but I do know it's a very short walk. Within that district, there's Portway Acres Park, Central Avenue Park, and Cabler Park. That right there, those three parks are the closest in any other part of the city. I do know one thing, that it's not just safety, but it's efficiency as well. That park has irrigation, there's two acres of irrigation. By standards nowadays, after going to state presentations, they really discourage us from having things by major highways or major roads. Even if we don't have sidewalks, but we can't put them in there anyways, because now we're attracting people to come to a park that I believe is unsafe, or could be unsafe. Basketball courts, they're already in need of resurfacing, so, I mean, it's my recommendation.
I'd like to say something, Commissioner Gall.
Ben, you didn't finish your presentation. What do you plan to do with that lot or that park when you move the play structure, or if you do?
Just, basically, what we wanted to do is continue to work with the Department of Interior, Parks and Wildlife. They did not purchase the property, where I can see from our records, but they did provide the benches, the basketball courts. Work with them to make sure their grant requirements are satisfied and the regulations. So we won't hamper us in the future with any other application we're going to submit to them. And eventually, it will be the commission's choice to see what we do with this property. Either just have it as green space or sell the property. But we need to make sure we cover all those, dot all our i's and dot all our t's, make sure that we've met all the grant requirements with these two federal agencies, I like the state and federal agencies.
I'd like to say something. This is something that, when I ran for city commission four years ago, I put something like this on my pushcart, because it was a concern. After I met with a lot of people in that community and in that, on that street, you know, a lot of them were telling me, "Commissioner, this is a safety issue. There's no parking spaces. Kids run between the cars on Central Avenue. They run on Boca Chica when balls get hit into the street there." And, you know, Boca Chica is one of our biggest state roads. And my first year in, we dedicated Chacalaco Park, renamed it Cabler Park. And a lot of people in my district called me up and like, "Look, you know, that's a safer place to have the park and really do something with that park, because it's a tranquility-type park." So it's two blocks away. It's closer for people to walk there to Cabler Park than it is to Central Avenue Park. And there, there's parking, and it's safer. And my belief was, look, you know, Camarillo has, his district owner has Oliveta Park. Rick has Gonzalez Park on that side. And nothing in our district, in my district, there's not a city park with a gym facility there. So my belief back in the day was, if we could sell this property and if it sells for a million, use it to build a gym for the kids over there. Because right now, everyone from the east side who plays city leagues or whatever, they have to jet all the way to Oliveta Park or Gonzalez Park to play their games. So the idea back when I first got in as commissioner, before y'all got on board, was to provide something in that district for the kids there. So it just makes sense, after talking to all these people in that area, which is my district, to show that we are taking proactive look at providing more safety for children. And if we can put it at Cabler Park and change everything over there, I don't see why that's, it's a block and a half away.
Commissioner Gall and Commissioner Zorba, and I think we have a citizen over there.
I don't have any problem with relocating the play space, because I think that is a safer place for children to play. But I don't agree with doing away with another green space, which we don't have enough of to begin with. So if you, I would not...
Or selling the land.
Oh, we don't have to sell it.
Even if it was to improve another park, but rather develop that into a green space that I'm sure Chris and his expertise could tell us about, that would be a good use of that spot in an urban area.
Yeah, with benches, you know, so where people can still walk there and relax, you know? I agree with Commissioner.
But everybody's walking from Cabler Park area back to this park.
I do support moving all the playground material over to the other park, because Champion Elementary is right there on Bowie, and it's just down the road. And whenever school is over, they walk all the way to Central, that Central Park there on the corner. And there's lots of traffic there, and I have a real problem and concern with those elementary students walking through that traffic. So I would prefer they just go down the road to Bowie Park, well, that's where it is, right, on Bowie Road. That's where I've seen it. And it's just a lot safer for them. So I fully support this. But I also am in favor of keeping the green space somehow, maybe for use by adults more than the children.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Let the citizen speak, though.
No problem.
I'd like to hear what Chris said, was going to say.
I just have a real quick statement. Nowadays, we're trying to use our parks and make them more efficient. When you have an event in a park, such as the wellness event we had, when you attract four hundred or five hundred people to a park, it's a lot of parking spaces. That park is not multi-use. That's for parents to take a few kids, go on the playground structures. Sometimes you'll have basketball games. Very rare. I'd like to get more usage out of the parks, and specifically that area. I do know that with the T P, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Division, that that money has to go to a parks project, to enhance existing parklands. If we develop the other seven acres, at least six, seven acres at that park, it costs a lot of money. So, you know, with all the other projects that we've been doing, a lot of these are in-house. Therefore, I'm really recommending this. If anybody knows our department, we're number one with kids and families, so we really will follow your guidelines. But I'm glad Ben's working with us.
Of course, you're getting made to allow the relocation of the equipment and retain the park as a green space with benches. And for everybody with...
But see, Mayor, they still need to work with the, with the, with that organization that supplied the equipment and funded the benches and all that, you know? And so we don't even know what the outcome of that will be. But, you know, I guess one of the things, and I agree with Dr. Gall and Commissioners and Zorba, that, you know, I understand everything takes money. And I agree that they do need a facility in Cabler Park, and I think that the six acres should be developed. But I don't want to lose this park either. I don't think we should be, you know, closing down a park, losing that space, and expanding another. I think you can never have too many parks. And so granted, it's going to take quite a bit of resources if we configure some parking, whether it be near the entrance or somehow, and then do the sidewalks. But I hate to say, you know, "Let's sell it," which could be worth quite a bit of money. But then we'd say, here, you know, we closed down the park, and then here we are trying to build new parks and, you know, and gaining as much green space as possible. And I think that'd be real difficult for me to support.
It would take a vote from the city commission to want to sell that land, so...
I understand.
That's not even an issue right now.
We could settle that by making the right motion to deny. And allows, in everybody's hands, allows the relocation of the equipment and retaining that, a screen space with benches for families to go there and just relax, read the paper, whatever they want, without being out there playing, you know, basketball. There's no basketball courts or equipment, okay? Mr. Uresti, you wanted to say something?
Roberto Uresti, I worked in that area and I also used that park from eighty-two to eighty-six with a lot of kids.
Identify yourself and your address.
Roberto Uresti, twelve twenty Caia Pluton. I worked in that area. I worked at El Jardín Elementary. I took my basketball, I was a coach, and I took all the kids there to use the facilities there. It is very well-used. It's hard for me to understand. We built it up this much, and now we're going to destroy it. That doesn't make any sense. Number two, I talked to Alice Wilson about this many, many years. And I asked Mrs. Wilson, "We need to put a bigger fence for the protection of the kids." And Mr. Atkinson was correct. But that grant didn't want to put any money there. They only put a little tiny fence like that. Should have been a six-foot fence. As far as parking is concerned, sir, they park on both sides. And there's an empty lot on the other side they wanted to buy it, but we don't need to buy anything. A lot of people use that park. A lot of kids are grown up now. They bring their own kids back in that park. Now, you're saying that it's a dangerous park. Well, La Lomita Park in the Galaxy area, that is super dangerous. Drug addicts there, the lights are broken, and there's no parking there. So you want to compare parks. This is wrong. This park has done it. This park has become a focal point for that community.
No, it hasn't. No, it hasn't. You're wrong about that.
We have St. Charles Park.
You're just wrong, man.
The St. Charles Park, one million dollars. Take a look at that park right now. Take a look at that park. And you know about that, Mayor, how much money we put into investing in that thing. Is there parking there, around it? They even tore the bars down. I'm sorry to say that. That park is important to the residents. I went to look for Cabler Park. I found, I think it's all grown up. Is there anything done to that park, Mr. Medina, Cabler Park right now? Is it just a forest? Well, I couldn't find it. It's on Bowie Street. I couldn't find it.
I thought you knew the matter.
If I couldn't find it, the residents are going to have a hard time. Leave the park the way it is. It's a good park for the residents in this area and for the kids. Thank you very much.
Mayor, let me just clarify...
Let me extract some response, because he's...
Well, can I clarify something about my park, Commissioner, before you speak?
Okay.
Well, let's talk about St. Charles Park. St. Charles Park cost the city a million dollars, and they got that from HUD. St. Charles Park is a beautiful park. The city has worked tirelessly to improve the security and the maintenance. And the bars are on the park, and there isn't graffiti on the park, because they take care of it on a regular basis. So to say that it is a dirty park or is a unsafe park, I strongly disagree. Because I try to pass by there at least every night on my way home to ensure that the park is okay. And P D does its efforts to make sure that it does as many pass-bys as it can. Now, in regards to La Lomita, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Because, again, that's another park in my district. A lot of people don't know about La Lomita, but it's in the Garden Park area. And I got to stand up for my parks. It is a park that people go, and, yes, some kids do vandalize it. But the city goes back and weeding seed, and I know we have, because I've participated with them, gone and made those repairs and cleaned it up. Now, each park is serviced by our park maintenance. If it's not, if a light's broken, I guarantee you, Mr. Uresti, by tomorrow, somebody from our crew will be out there making sure that it's fixed, okay? And if it's a P U B light, we'll work on that. But, again, if there's a problem with the park, and you call it unsafe, I believe that's unfair. Because kids are going, and they're playing, and as they should. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Camarillo. Commissioner Atkinson?
I just want to tell the people out there, and you all see this guy come up here every meeting and get on his little soapbox about what he believes Brownsville should be.
Let's not get personal.
Okay. Well, he gets personal. And you know what? I'm defending, I'm defending, I'm defending the...
Address issues.
Okay, I'm defending the fifty families that I met with in that area that have asked me to close down this park and just move it a block and a half away. I mean, where am I losing...
I mean, where am I losing the common sense with everybody here? Because there's a seventeen acres, a block and a half down where we can have these kids show up, like Miss, Commissioner Mora said, after school, play there. Why do you want them on Boca Chica where there's no parking and no sidewalks, playing there just waiting for an accident to happen? You know, right now, a, a truck could just spill over and just hit kids. Hopefully that'll never happen, but Cabler Park, it's just safe. It's safe. You know, you have, you have a lot of people using Cabler Park too. It just makes sense. And if, going back to selling of this, of this, of this land, because we could've used, say we sell it for a million dollars, use it toward another wellness gym over there, which you promote, Commissioner Gallin. So, I don't see where an acre of land on a corner of Boca Chica and Central Avenue is that big of a deal for you to keep as green space when we have a lot of green space in my district. And I, what I'm doing by coming forward is representing the people that live in my district on what they need and what they want and what they asked me to bring forward to help them get situated with having their kids go to a park where it's more safer, you know?
Commissioner Atkinson?
Obviously, this is a very emotional and passionate issue. I didn't expect this. Um, but, you know, I think, um, we want to take the money for a gym through the general fund we have. Everybody wins with this. I think there's a way for everybody to win with this. And using fear is not the way, I think, because this is an urban city park and there's many municipalities with urban city parks where they're, they're located next to major thorough, thoroughfitters. And they're safe. How can we make this park safe and make it functional, uh, with, with the green, green, uh, space use, uh, like you were suggesting? And at the same time, develop the, uh, Cabler Park? Uh, I think we can do both. I mean, why can't you come back with a plan that, that, um, makes it possible, uh, to do both? If we have to do, uh, maybe, uh, uh, relocation of the equipment and, uh, build some courts over there and, and later expand with, uh, uh, a gym or something like that as part of the plan, we, we can find a way to do it. But at the same time, maintain this as, as a neighborhood park that has been known to many families there for many years and to displace them, I think, would be a disservice to the community and to them. Because it is a park that is used and I've seen it used by many people. I myself used it when I was there. Uh, but to make it safer, of course, we all support that. If it requires, uh, building a, a little higher fence or nicer fence, well, maybe that's what it takes. But building, uh, benches and, and that's a beautiful corner lot. It's got beautiful grown trees there already, you know? And it's got value just on the quality of life. Uh, a, and how can we enhance it to make it work for everybody? I think you can do that. I think, I think we can table this if y'all want to. Let him come back with a little better plan.
I'd like to.
Or approve it with the relocation, uh, and to keep, to keep this park and not to sell the park, uh, as a green space park. Commissioner?
I move to close public hearing.
Uh, yeah, she wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm not objecting to your desire for a safer park, okay? I'm not objecting to that, but there is a, I do read a lot of the parks and literature that's out and I'm sure Chris would agree, there's a great movement in this country and all of the world to not do away with green space, but rather enhance green space.
That's fine.
So, I could, I can certainly make a motion that allows them...
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Can we, any further discussion? This is a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, you ready?
Although I am for green space, I really am, there's, you need to take a step back and look at our budgetary process and look at where we're at. We are in need, Pat, you're, you're in this business. You know what a commercial lot will get us, commercial corner lot. And we're scrambling for money all over the place. Charlie's idea of moving the, which is, you know, which is fine, you know, but I just say, we do have issues with this park when it comes to the parking, when it comes to the safety of it. I receive the same phone calls as Charlie does on that park. Now, I'm just looking at it from a city standpoint and economic standpoint where a corner, commercial lot on Boca Chica will get us some very good money that we desperately need for other projects. That's just my two cents worth.
And everybody has, uh, an opinion here and it's all welcome. I just think, first of all, right now's not the time to sell land because you don't get the, the, the value that I think it's really worth, one, especially that type of land. The other is, you know, I have a, a big concern with displacing the citizens of that neighborhood from the park they come to know and love and use.
Who? Who? Give me a name, Mayor.
The neighborhood there.
I've met with the neighborhood. That's my district. I know everybody in that street. Give me a name.
Just go on a weekend.
I would like a name, Mayor.
Commissioner, I'm not here to debate with you.
Come on. You, you, you're grandstanding because you have personal feelings against me.
There's no need to attack me for...
My project, so it's a big deal.
I just think there's...
Well, give me a name.
Citizens that use it on weekends.
Be quiet.
Commissioner, you're out of order.
Well, come on, let's move on then.
And you're misbehaving like a child.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, you, no, I'm not.
Because you should respect people...
Because this is something that my district needs.
It's healthy, it's healthy to debate the issue, but to be disrespectful, nobody works.
Yeah, you probably haven't even gone out there. Some of you, you probably...
Look, Mr. Uresti, we know where... Seven is here. Not everybody's gonna agree with you, Commissioner.
They don't agree.
That doesn't mean they're all wrong.
They don't agree and...
Okay, we, that's fine. We all have differences of opinion. Let's respect that, okay? So, that's my concern, displacing the people from that neighborhood. I think we can work to make it...
They're not displaced. There's a park a block and a half away, Mayor. Open your ears.
Can I have a motion?
Move it close, move it close.
Second.
Motion to close.
He did.
Move it close.
Motion to close. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Gallin. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is the action item. Can I have a motion?
I would, I would motion to, to proceed with, uh, with, uh, with the relocation of, of Central Avenue Park to the immediate vicinity, which is Cabler Park, and not to sell anything, leave it alone for green space.
Second.
Yeah. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I expect this to be some funny, emotional...
After the trophy issue last, last meeting...
Okay, next item, please.
This doesn't surprise me at all.
And then the motion surprises you.
Almost forgot about that one.
Next item.
Item twelve.
Item twelve.
Item twelve, public hearing in action on ordinance number twenty-ten dash fifteen-twenty-two to amend chapter twenty-two of the City Code of Ordinances by adding article twelve sexually-oriented businesses, sections twenty-two dash six forty through twenty-two dash six forty-six.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Um, what we're doing here is we're proposing a new sexually-oriented businesses ordinance, ordinance for the city of Brownsville. Um, right now, the city of Brownsville addresses these businesses in the zoning code in some aspects, but we don't currently have a comprehensive, uh, ordinance for those businesses like most large cities do. Um, so the ordinance we're proposing today provides a comprehensive sexually-oriented businesses ordinance as an amendment to the business code. Uh, one of the main things this ordinance does is it provides a new definition of what a sexually-oriented business is. Right now, the, the city of Brownsville design, uh, defines a sexually-oriented business by tracking, uh, the Texas code, which defines these businesses as, um, sex parlors, nude studios, modeling studios, love parlors, adult bookstores, uh, adult movie theaters, adult video arcades, adult movie arcades, uh, adult mot, adult motels or other commercial enterprises, the primary purpose of which is to offer the service or the sale, rental or exhibiting of devices or other items intended to provide sexual gratification or stimulation to the customer. We think that this, this definition leaves a little room for ambiguity and we want to tighten it a little. And what we've done is we've, we've left this aspect more or less of the definition as far as the enumeration of the different businesses, but we've added a few provisions, um, such as, uh, businesses that hold themselves out to the public as sexually-oriented businesses, uh, businesses that receive a substantial or significant portion of their monthly revenue from the offering of sexually-oriented merchandise or services, or, uh, businesses that utilize a substantial portion of their floor space or, uh, facility space for sexually-oriented merchandise or services. And, uh, significant or substantial is defined newly in the ordinance as being ten percent or greater of a measured quantity, percentage or portion. Another thing this ordinance does is it requires additional notice requirements for new sexually-oriented businesses so members of the public can have fair opportunity to object if one comes into their community. Let's see. Uh, we also have new disclosure requirements for owners of proposed businesses and prohibitions for, um, those who want to start these businesses who might have certain, uh, criminal convictions. And we also regulate hours of operation. Um, some sexually-oriented businesses within the community, they do not sell alcohol and so they're not subject to the T A B C rules. And so what we do is we've set hours of operations and we, we also want to make sure minors are not working in these places. This ordinance also regulates appearance, signage, uh, some fencing, which currently is touched on in the zoning code, but we're, we're looking at tightening the zoning code a little bit too, as far as that goes. Uh, finally, there's a grandfathering provision. Um, any existing sexually-oriented businesses which are complying with the applicable ordinances are grandfathered. Um, businesses that, you know, did not previously operate are, are not grandfathered, but, uh, we're, we're more concerned with, we're not so concerned with those which are currently complying with the law, but those which, uh, may want to come in and, and, uh, not comply. And those are really the high points. Um, I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions?
I had a question about the grandfather. What, what, does that mean that they don't have to, they can stay where they are, but they don't have to change their signage or any of the other things that you just mentioned?
That's correct. That's correct. Um, any business that currently exists and that is a sexually-oriented business, as long as they're in compliance with the applicable ordinance at the time of their inception, then they are grandfathered in.
And there's not many of those businesses around, is there?
I don't believe so, no.
No, okay. Commissioner Atkinson, you want to say something?
No.
I thought you had your hand up. Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay, this is a public hearing. Can I have a motion to close?
Move it clo, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion to close with Commissioner Camarillo. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, but Commissioner Gallin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, this is an action item?
Move it approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Gallin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen, public comment period.
Uh, we have one. Uresti.
At the last meeting, there were comments by this commission on Mr. Alex Resendez on the Dana Road. Last night, we spoke, I spoke to Mr. Cortez of the Tech Dot pertaining to the lights on Dana Road. I have to say, all of you were there, because I cannot say personally, all of you were there. And it seems like the responsibility fell on the city because I asked that question, why hasn't the lights been put up there since all those people have been killed? My cousin, Albert Peña, was also killed there. And I went to Renee Olivera, state representative...
First, let me interject and I am allowed to interject as chairman...
Yes, sir.
...to shed light on what you're saying. About eighteen months ago, that concern of yours was, uh, made known and it was forwarded to, uh, the traffic department. The traffic department contacted Tech Dot and for the past eighteen months, they've been working on that issue. The light should be, uh, in place in about two months. We've done our portion to get that light done. Tech Dot, uh, uh, it needs to do their portion, which apparently will take another two months to get it done. So, it's not like you're bringing this issue for the first time. There were others who brought this issue and it was being addressed and it's just unfortunate and you're right. Uh, it is a hazard, uh, but we have to work, because it is a state, uh, thorough, thoroughfare, we have to work with the state and it takes, uh, a longer time than we would like, but it is getting done.
Yes, Commissioners, but what Mr. Cortez told me last night, Mr. Cortez told me something. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir. Let me speak.
Wait, wait, this, this is not, as, as chairman, I have the right to interject that way. He's, it helps, it helps the conversation here. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just letting, I'm letting him finish.
His public comment need to, need to follow what's on the agenda. He's not talking about anything on the agenda. He's out of order. Am I right or wrong?
He's, he's, he's talking about a concern he has that, that he's brought here.
Public comment for what's on the agenda.
Let him go ahead, go ahead. The chair has ruled. The chair has ruled. Go ahead. The chair has ruled. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cortez, last night told me, I said, the city said that Tech, Tech Dot has to put the lights up. He said, no. Most of the businesses there had put up their own lights. Tech Dot didn't put them. He said Walmart was an example. They put up their own lights. The city had the responsibility to put in a, a sign or a light any time they wanted to, because that was the question I asked. Who is responsible?
So, they lied to you.
And it fell, and it fell on this responsibility. I know you took the action, but the thing is, it took too long for people to get killed there. And that's my question. And that's the thing I asked him. And as you all were there to listen to that and some of you didn't know, I'm sorry, you didn't know what Mr. Cortez was talking about. And when I saw that as Commissioners that you didn't know, then it was sad. And I learned something. That is something that you should know. I knew about it, but the thing is, it wasn't done. You had the responsibility to put up a light any time. There are some posts, I think it's on International and Ringo, they're not being used. You could've used those.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
And sir, with all due respect, you didn't know.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. The city attorney is speaking.
Yes, I think if this gentleman's talking about legal responsibility for putting up a traffic light involving an accident, I think the proper thing is to refer him to the city manager.
He's all wrong.
But it would be inappropriate, it would be inappropriate to discuss, you know, city liability in this setting.
Okay, refrain yourself from-
Yes, sir, I just got to finish it up, sir. I apologize to you. My point is this-
You're wrong, but make your point.
My point is that you all think that I don't know what I'm talking about.
You don't.
But you are wrong also, as all the commissioners, you should have had the time to use this. I'm not saying anything, but the thing is, this should have been taken care of a long time since the first accident. And I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Uresti.
Yeah, go sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Uresti. For the public, you know, this is, this is what I find difficult to, to, um, understand, understand-
Put the cameras on him. Put the cameras so you can see.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
So people can see at home how he's laughing like a-
I share, I share what you think also, as far as-
Just put a camera on him.
As far as people coming up here and talking about something they don't know, they don't know what they're talking about. But, but you know something? The city, the city manager, through the city manager, because this is a city manager for a government, and through the fine staff that we have, I assure you, does not ignore these type of safety issues. We do not ignore them. It just takes a process. What Mr. Uresti is referring to is, is not as simple as he claims it is. It's not within the city's jurisdiction to go put a light on a state thoroughway. You got to get the state to authorize it, and you got to get them to put it on there with our assistance also. So with that having said, that unfortunately, people do come up here, instead of talking to the city manager before they come up here, or the department head, where they can resolve these issues, it makes us all look bad, because it seems like they know what they're talking about, when in reality, they're not. Okay, that's the only public comment we had. We respect and encourage people to come here with concerns.
Mayor, I'd like to apologize. Mayor, I'd like to apologize to the people out there, because they don't deserve this type of behavior from me or anybody from the audience, but we have to have a better type of people coming up here. We have to have a, a, a people that are knowledgeable about what they want from our city, and not just have the same recycled people who just come and just make up lies about what we're doing or what we're not doing. It's just wrong, and we, Brownsville deserves a better type of public comment, people coming up here.
You made your point. Thank you. And thank you again, we encourage people to come here and voice their concerns, but please get with management. I strongly urge that. It's very simple. Call management, call the department, and you will find, a lot of times, good information that may be helpful to you. Thank you. Let's go to item fourteen.
Item fourteen, consideration in action to name Morningside Park Softball Complex Field number four in memory of Parks and Recreation employee Jorge Daniel Hurtado, who passed away on Sunday, February the seventh, 2010.
Our condolences to the family. I went to the wake on behalf of the city. It's never an easy thing to lose a son. Bury him, and we share in their grief, and I think this is a very appropriate, thank you, Chris, for bringing this to us, and this is a small way of saying we appreciate his service to the city.
Appreciate it. Just had a couple of comments, if I may. Jorge Daniel Hurtado was an employee, a five-year employee with the City of Brownsville. He was thirty-one years of age, a very integral part of our team at Parks and Rec. He was a very instrumental young man, as far as like taking care of our fields and putting time and energy and dedication into the fields. Just to point out a few things, it's, it's situations like this that show team camaraderie and people pulling together, you really don't know who supports you until you're actually in a situation. Our employees had a lot, they've, a lot of support from the city, from the commission, especially from city manager, and it was great to see everybody. We had about fifty to sixty employees that, that really, that were at the funeral. His father, Gilberto Hurtado, was part of Public Works, and it's a brother and sisterhood. A lot of people don't understand that, but us city employees served the community, and Daniel, Jorge, someone commented, served us well. I do want to add that that field, Field Number Four, we're not going to call it Field Number Four. Our employees are already calling it Hurtado Field. That's just the sign they put up. They wanted to put a sign up. We're going to do something a little nicer. We're not in the habit of naming fields after people. We have named parks after former commissioners and mayors, but there are fifty-four athletic fields in the City of Brownsville, and people have no clue what fifty-four athletic fields mean. There's a lot of irrigation, there's thousands of lights, there's tons and tons of dirt that we have to bring in every year to mix it up. I've been here nine years, and a lot of the people in the community can actually see that the parks have really transformed with the work of the former city commissioners, current commissioners, mayors, and we take a pride in it. And as one of the public just mentioned a little bit ago, parks get hit every day. We could clean a park up tomorrow, somebody could go in and graffiti it, we just have to keep hitting it and keep working with the community and educate the community. Therefore, at this present time, I'm just educating the community that this young man started a very big movement for us five years ago as part of the team. I hired him along with a couple of other people, and he really made the parks and the athletic fields what they are.
You all have a picture of him?
Um, I know they had a picture in the, I didn't put a picture up here. I, it's been emotional and everything, but I, my employees wanted me to put this one up.
Would approve.
We appreciate your support on that.
Thank you, Chris, for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
This is an action item. We have, we have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Truany. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Item fifteen.
Thank you, Chris.
Consideration in action to acknowledge the city's delinquent ad valorem tax collections report from October oh-one, 2008 through September thirtieth, 2009, presented by representatives of Linebarger, Goggin, Blair &amp; Sampson, LLP, the city's delinquent ad valorem tax collections legal firm.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, city staff, and members of the community, my name is John Givada, and I'm the delinquent tax attorney with Linebarger, Goggin, Blair &amp; Sampson. It's a great pleasure to be before you and give, to give the following report that covers this last fiscal year. I'm proud to report that, that this particular report provides a strong, consistent collection effort for the City of Brownsville. It includes increased dollar collections, it includes an increased percentage collection, and it includes a decreased delinquent tax roll, the amount of money that the city is owed. This first, our first effort, our pre-litigation efforts always start with trying to work with the taxpayer. We want to save the tool litigation as a very last resort. So the way that we work with the taxpayer is through property inspections and our mailing program. Our property inspection seeks to go out to the property, identify the property, talk to the individual about making a payment plan, trying to get, get them on a payment plan so that they can pay all the taxes they're owed to the city. If that doesn't work, then our mailings are a backup. This is a short synopsis of the mailing program that we have on behalf of the city. We have nine different levels of mailings that go out per year, and our firm pays for all costs associated with those mailings. If we have to resort to the tool litigation, that is a last resort. What we'll do is identify the property, identify all interested persons that have an interest in that property, whether they live there, they're renters, they own the property, we want to identify anyone who might have an interest, and then we go into litigation. Here's a short picture of what your litigation program looked like during this fiscal year. Judgments, we took ninety-nine judgments totaling $268,000 owed to the city. We had forty-six paid non-suits or released judgments totaling $150,000. Original petitions filed, these are the lawsuits that were filed last fiscal year, two-hundred-and-forty, totaling $749,000 owed to the city. Pending petition, excuse me, pending petitions, this is what is owed to the city that we have currently in litigation, a little over $1 million. And pre-litigation, we are currently analyzing fifty-one title abstracts to file those lawsuits in the next month or so. Collection comparison. This is a four-year history of your collection comparisons. Four years ago, 2005, 2006, your delinquent tax roll was $4.9 million. That's what the city was owed. We collected 1.6, or about thirty-four percent, of your delinquent tax roll. This last fiscal year, all the way to the right, your delinquent tax roll at the bottom is $5 million. We collected 1.7 million, or about thirty-four percent, of your delinquent tax roll. So that's a, an increase over last year, especially in these tough times, we're glad to report that there's an increase, not only in dollar amount collected, but also percentage collected, and most importantly, the amount that you're owed, the number at the bottom. Whenever you have collections, dollar collections that are higher, percentage collections that are higher, and the amount that you're owed that are lower, that's a perfect scenario. That's what you want. Three years ago, we had a little spike. You had a couple of accounts that were in bankruptcy that went ahead and paid, and that kind of was an off year, but bottom line, you see consistent collections that your planning, your finance department can, can plan on regarding that income. This next graph is pretty much the same. The green is identical, your identical collections, but the orange signifies your penalty and interest that is also collected, penalty and interest on each account. So bottom line, this last fiscal year, we collected a little over $2.3 million for the city. Tax sales. This last fiscal year, we sought to sell eighteen different properties through four property tax sales. You see the results here. Ten were sold, bringing in a little over $40,000 in base tax. Payment agreements, we entered two, we entered into two payment agreements totaling $13,000, and we had six properties that were struck off totaling a little over $23,000. Struck-off properties are those properties that are offered for sale, but there are no bids taken. We let those properties accumulate, and then we'll offer them for resale at a resale event, usually in October or November of each year. The work plan for the city. The work plan includes an aggressive, aggressive lawsuit production program. We need to have lawsuits in the queue, added to our mailing program, added to our personal visits, but if we have to file the lawsuits, then we will. We currently have fifty-one in the queue totaling about $150,000 that'll be filed in the next thirty to sixty days. Increased taxpayer visitations. It's very important that we get out to the taxpayer and talk to them and, and get into a payment agreement before going into litigation. The three-hundred-and-fifty-six pending lawsuits, we'll work aggressively to get those to judgment, and then tax sale if need be. We're currently monitoring six-hundred-and-eighty-one payment agreements that are entered into with citizens of the city, and that totals a little over $348,000. We'll continue monitoring bankruptcy accounts. You currently have three-hundred-and-ninety-nine accounts in bankruptcy totaling a little over $365,000. Just because someone's in bankruptcy doesn't mean those taxes aren't going to get paid, but we have to monitor the bankruptcy process so that we can get those taxes paid as quickly as possible. We'll continue a similar city mailing program that we did last year, and of course, move properties to sale if need be. We have a tax sale scheduled for the first Tuesday in March, another one scheduled for June, and another one scheduled for August. Now, what is that plan, what is that work plan done for you thus far? Well, here's where we are. October one, 2009, to January this last month, total collections were a little over $685,000 in base tax compared to last year. At the same time, it was $616,000. So we're about $66,000 in base tax ahead. Lawsuits filed, we totaled a hundred and four suits through the end of January totaling $173,000 in base tax owed to the city. Tax sale and resale programs, we had a tax sale in October that is not on this report. We sold seven properties, bringing in a little over $22,000. In November, we had a resale, which we all talked about earlier in the meeting, that eleven properties were sold totaling $13,000. And then in March, this next, in two weeks, we'll have our, our March sale, where we're offering nine properties for sale, seeking to collect $27,465. In a nutshell, you have a great program going. Again, it's key, especially in this economy, you want to have increased sales overla, uh, increased sales, increased collections over last year, increased percentage collection, and a decrease in your delinquent tax roll. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the commission? None. I entertain a motion. Action item?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Commissioner Gallin to approve, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion?
Commissioner Truany, go ahead.
It's all right. Commissioner Gallin is all right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Next item.
Item sixteen, consideration in action to adopt an interlocal agreement with Military Highway Water Supply Corporation to collect garbage fees, city maintenance fees, and the federal unfunded mandatory compliance environmental fees from customers it serves that are not served by the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
How many accounts are we talking about?
Very few, Mayor. Honorable Mayor members of the City Commission, for, I guess, we started in, in November discussing ways of collecting, or actually contracting with the Almito Water Supply Corporation, as well as the Military Highway Water Corporation, to collect some of our garbage and city fees. The only, there's actually, since, through annexations that we've had throughout the years, in the past, PUB would serve all the, all these accounts, but as, as annexations has taken place, there are some areas where they're not serviced by the PUB. And when they're not serviced by the PUB, even though the PUB cert, they bill some of these accounts, in many cases, some of these residential accounts are not, are not paid. So when, when we started annexing property, we, we had approached the Aljardin Water Supply. We have approached, at that time, by the way, Aljardin Water Supply came, came to the table. We have a contract with them. They are collecting the garbage and the other city fees. We had problems with the other two, which is Almito Water Supply Corporation and the Military Highway Corporation. And, and this was because we had some previous general managers that did not want to take that into, into, into our, our request. Since then, there's been some turnover, and there's some general managers that are now running the Military Highway Water Corporation, as well as the Almito. They've, they've come forward and, and they, we approached them, and they agreed for, for them to build our, some of our customers. I'm going to go very rapidly with this PowerPoint presentation. I will skip some, some pages here. I've already covered theirs. There's right now thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight thousand, nine forty-one residential accounts that are being billed by the PUB. There's a small amount that somehow are, are not being billed, which is four-hundred-and-eighty-two, accounts, but ninety-eight point eight percent is actually being billed. The, the Aljardin Water Supply Corporation is billing four-hundred-and-four accounts. These are the monthly fees that are included in the PUB bill, as well as Aljardin Water Supply, garbage fees for one container, eighteen fifty-three, and then you have the maintenance fee and the environmental fee. Altogether, a resident pays about twenty-five fifty-three for a one-container service. For a two-container service, the total is thirty-seven. And if you have a walk-in service, it's thirty-three ten. Those are the fees that will be in the, in the bills when, when they go out, when Military Highway Supply Corporation agrees to add the city fees to the monthly, monthly bills. Now, there are some things that, that are in the, in the proposal, and some of this is that the funds will be forwarded to the city, and accounting of all the customers that are paying are going to be sent to us, and when payment for water and city fees by any customer is made, in this case, Military Highway Water Supply Corporation shall apply the funds paid first to any indebtedness of the cus, of the customer to the Military Highway, and then to the payment of any indebtedness to the city. The Military Water Supply agrees to use its best efforts to collect city fees due to the city. If at any time, any customer fails to pay any amounts collectible by Military Highway, Military Highway is authorized determining water and sewer drainage service to the customers as, as deemed appropriate by section in, in the, in the government, that, that particular law. Failure to disconnect any service shall not be an event of default in this, in this agreement, but shall entitle city to discontinue payment of the $1 monthly billing fee. By the way, the, the Military Highway Water Supply is going to be charging us $5 for a setup fee for each customer, and then every month that they're going to be charging us a dollar. In the event water and sewer services are disconnected for non-payment of city fees, Military Highway agrees not to provide waters or sewer service to the customer until the Military Highway receives payment of all the delinquent city fees, plus any applicable charges that are then collected, collectible in accordance with the city ordinance. And then any party may terminate this agreement within a thirty-day notice, and as soon as this contract is adopted, the, sometime, we will go ahead and mail or deliver a letter to all the residential accounts, notify them that on certain date or month, the Military Highway will be included in the city fees in their monthly water bill. We've already taken this to both, to the board of the Military Highway, and they're, they're located over there in La Vampago. We met with them, we met with the, with the board. They unanimously approved the, the agreement. Now it's up to us to approve that, and then we can move forward. Staff recommends that we approve the contract.
Pete, is the, may I have a, I have a question. Does the $5 fee that the city pays, is that, do we get that back? Is that added to their service, or is that just a $5 fee that we're going to pay them?
No, that's a fee that it charged to the city.
That's a fee that's charged to the city for, for them collecting?
It's a one-time.
A one-time?
One-time fee.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? This is an action item.
Would approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria. Second by Commissioner Truany. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Item seventeen, consideration in action to adopt an interlocal agreement with Almito Water Supply Corporation to collect garbage fees, city maintenance fees, and the federal unfunded mandatory compliance environmental fees from customers it serves that are not served by the Brownsville Public Utilities Board.
Honorable Mayor members of the City Commission, this is the same terms as the contract that was discussed earlier with Military Highway. Almito Water Supply is the same.
I'd move to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve of Commissioner Truany, second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Let the record show Commissioner Gallin is back. She, she was not here for the other vote, nor Commissioner Atkinson, okay? But she is here on this one. Item eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eighteen, consideration in action to adopt Budget Amendment Resolution Number 2010-003 to amend the general fund budget by $362,300 to provide funding for a portion of the costs incurred by Lowe's Home Centers Incorporated for city infrastructure improvements as per contract.
Honorable Mayor members of the City Commission, when Lowe's Home Improvement Center was built, there were some infrastructure expenses that needed to be done. The city at that time did not have the financing available to, to do some of the infrastructure expenses. The estimated amount was $1,675,000. I have asked Lowe's to supply us with their actual numbers. They're, they're going to give this information to us once they, they have it, but in that agreement that was made, it was that the city would pay the sales tax that they- But in that agreement that was made, it was that the city would pay the sales tax that they collect and use them to lower the amount that they had, that they had used to, to do the improvements. When they supplied the information to us, they indicated to us that they had paid the state three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. I did tell them that we would pay them as soon as we would verify it with the state. The state came up with a different number. I did advise Lowe's that the amount of the reimbursement that we're going to have for the first year is not what they had turned in of three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, but the amount that was actually given to us by the state, which is three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. I know that the, the budget amendment calls for a higher number, but the payment is going to be for the lower number. We recommend the budget amendment be approved.
Okay. Okay, this is an action item.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Truanyi. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen.
Item nineteen, consideration in action, resolution number twenty-ten dash zero-zero-two to establish a community revitalization plan of public housing of the Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville, including public housing developments known as Poncieta, Citrus Gardens, Citrus Gardens Annex, and Buena Vida.
I would, Mayor, City Commissioner, this is a requirement by, by the Housing Authority to submit their application for tax credits to the, to the Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Staff from the Housing Authority and the consultants are here, if they have any questions.
Okay, this is consideration in action, a resolution, do you, do the City Commission have any questions?
Motion approved.
So I actually have.
Oh, go ahead.
We have a motion?
Well, I actually had a question, but, okay.
You can ask a question afterwards. Do you have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria? Any discussion?
Ben, how large an area is this, that we're going to demolish?
There's several properties in, there's three different complexes, so I'll let the consultant.
Yes, I'm a Paul O'Leary Flores, I do consultant work for the Brownsville Housing Authority. And as Mr. Medina said, there are several properties included. The Poncieta Development, for example, is twenty-eight acres, which will be redeveloped into two affordable housing developments. A hundred-and-fifty townhomes for, for families and ninety apartments for senior citizens. Citrus Gardens likewise will be, I think it's a hundred-and-thirty-eight apartment that will be demolished and redeveloped into another hundred-and-thirty-eight affordable housing units. The, the others at this point are just potential properties that will be redeveloped if the opportunity for funding becomes available. But right now, the, the main two that, that are scheduled for redevelopment is the Poncieta, which has been vacant for about three years, and then Citrus Gardens is the other one for sure that'll get redeveloped.
Okay, and the Poncieta is twenty-two acres, is what you said?
Poncieta what?
You said it was about twenty-two acres total?
Yes, it's right, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item twenty.
Item twenty.
Consideration in action on resolution number twenty-ten dash zero-zero-five on an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville, County of Cameron, Texas, and Brownsville Independent School District to construct sidewalks along Vermillion Road from State Highway four to four-thousand feet linear north, linear feet north along Eddie Lucio Junior Middle School and El Jardín Elementary School.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Please find the attached agenda item requesting approval to adopt an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville, Cameron County, Cameron County and the Independent School District to construct some sidewalks alongside Vermillion Road, is a four-hundred linear feet. And the cities will be conducting a partial labor and equipment to construct these sidewalks. And we're thinking about it, it might take us about two months to, to finish this project.
Okay, this is an action item.
Motion approved.
Let me approve it, I've been trying to get this done for fourteen years.
Okay, Commissioner Longoria will have the honor. Motion to approve, and we have a second, Commissioner Truanyi. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Santana.
Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, consideration in action to award a contract for the West Brownsville Storm Sewer Treatment Improvements Project.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Staff recommendation is to award a contract for West Brownsville Storm Water Treatment Improvements for the West Brownsville Watershed Project to Peterson Construction Company out of Los Fresnos, Texas, which is the low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of one-million-two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. This, this bid came in under the engineer's cost estimate by a hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. So we got a pretty good bid. The completion time for this project is two-hundred-and-forty consecutive calendar days as per the project specifications. And funding for this project is available from the Community Development Block Grant Recovery Funds in the amount of eight-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-four-hundred dollars. And Hurricane Dollar disaster funding for an amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. And the planning department, as well as the Ambiotech Engineering Consulting Firm, and the city engineer concurs with this, with this recommendation.
Thank you, Robert. Do you have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two, consideration in action to authorize a term contract for procurement card services through the state of Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts to J.P. Morgan Chase.
We currently have a contract that was awarded back in, if I'm not mistaken, two thousand and five, with the same, with the same provider, with J.P. Morgan Chase. The, the reason why we're going with this state contract is to take advantage of the rebates. The rebates that we are currently getting is zero-point-forty-one to zero-point-sixty-two, sixty-two percent. And that's based on a, on a approximately, let me see, a two-point-five million dollar, dollars of expenditures per fiscal year. Now with this new contract with the state, we're gonna, we're gonna get those rebates for one-point-twenty-two percent. Now the beauty of this is that we keep the same provider. We also get new P cards, and we also get new software. So basically, we're, we're just moving to the state contract. Also, also, the current contract expired on, on February the seventh. I was able to get an extension for thirty days, so we can, so we can get this new contract in place, and we allow enough time for the transition. So staff recommends to award, to authorize a term contract for procurement card through the state of Texas Comptrollers of Public Accounts to J.P. Morgan Chase from Round Rock, Texas. And it's, it's for a rebate of one-point-twenty-two percent based on the, on the, based on the, on a two-point-five million dollar of expenditures per, per fiscal year.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any discussion?
May I have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Luna, on the procurement card, not, not every, obviously not every employee has a procurement card, correct?
No, sir.
There's only selected individuals within every department that has access to a P card.
A few liaisons per department, yes.
And the city has all, the city has a different bank in which its money is deposited into, correct? The procurement card is like, they're going to charge something, and then we pay that, we pay like a credit card. You pay the bank, you pay Chase.
Basically what it is.
Second, American Express.
Just checking.
Okay, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three, consideration in action to reject bids received for pay parking improvements for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Staff recommendation is to reject the bids that were received for pay parking improvements for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport. The bids that, that were received were over sixty-seven percent above the engineer's estimate.
They were sixty-seven percent what?
Sixty-seven percent over the engineer's estimate. The lowest bid that we received was a hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Was the engineer that off, or something on here?
No, the engineer's estimate on your package, it's on the tab sheet. The engineer's estimate was for one-hundred-and-six-thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, what, what's causing this over price?
One of the things can be, could be that...
Larry?
To ans, to answer your question, the, the, based on the recommendation from Ambiotech, it's one, one that the, the, the general contractors that submitted bids on this, that's not really what they do a hundred percent, like...
So we only have one bid?
No, we, we have two bids, but the two bids came in way over the engineer's estimate.
Particularly, particularly in, in lengthy discussions with the project engineer and the detailed analysis of the bids.
Give to the mic, please.
Okay. The primary issue appeared to be having to do with an extremely high cost associated with electrical wiring. And because of that, we believe the bids are way, way too high. I would also note to you, since the time that we have gone out for bids, the city manager, as well as myself and the purchasing department, have taken advantage of an opportunity to have the City Public Works Department to do some work. That work that has been done should save the city a considerable amount of money. It's another reason why we believe it's important to reject these bids, redesign the project, and rebid it.
I'm going to reject.
Second.
We have a motion to reject, by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Gallin. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item twenty-four, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of pay parking equipment for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of pay parking equipment to Associated Time and Parking Controls of Austin, Texas, the low responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of forty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. The completion time for this project, that includes also training to the airport staff, is sixty consecutive calendar days. The interim funding for this project is in account sixty-two dash ninety-one twenty-six dash eight forty-eight dash two oh seven, and, and it will be replaced with revenue from the parking lot after it starts producing revenue. So this is the second phase of the, of the previous project that we requested to be rejected.
Mr. Luna, how does this pay parking work? Is it like a ticket counter, you get a ticket?
That is correct.
Depending on the hours you're there, if that's...
That is correct.
Like in Harlingen, where they get...
Can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Yeah, motion approved, Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Truanyi. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Camarillo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, and good night.